Hello.
Hello, this is Christine.
Hey Christine.
Good evening. We are a minute early, but we do have a extra duty tonight, so we're going to start at 5:29 and get started here. So let's turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate, and then let's stand and do the pledge, and then we'll introduce our judge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dalby?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Now, it's my privilege to introduce Judge Daly, who is going to do the honors of swearing in our new council. So Judge, you have the floor, and the prospective council people. And Mayor, if you would step up here with the judge, we'll do you as a group, and he can give you the instructions. On behalf of the entire current city council, I want to welcome you all to your new roles, and looking forward to having you join the council and working with our city staff. Thank you, Judge. Merry Christmas to you. At this time, with all the excitement tonight, we are going to go back to the agenda, which is the Board of Health meeting, the first part of the agenda, and take care of some business there. So the council is in session, and item one.
Approve the minutes for meeting number seven on October 5th, 2021, as presented. Recommendation: approve the minutes.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Holly.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 505 South Sheridan in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
Good evening, Zach. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And because we have the new council members here today, I'll start with just really briefly. One of the things that when people voted for council, they maybe didn't think of at the top of their mind, or when they even decided to run for council, they didn't think of at the top of their mind, is that everyone on our council also serves on our Board of Health and is responsible for making sometimes difficult decisions about whether or not you're going to condemn someone's property and have it demolished, among other things. And so that's what's being asked tonight. In this case, this property has been placarded since September 26, 2014, and in that time, it's changed ownership several times without any substantial progress. The most recent owner submitted a repair plan, but not complete any of the items on the plan, and the property still has several deficiencies. The condemnation notice was served by certified mail and by posting of notice on the property and in the courier. There are some photos of the property's condition there.
Thank you, Zach. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this item, now is the time to step to the microphone. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 505 South Sheridan, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: approve the condemnation of the structures located at 505 South Sheridan.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Zach?
I just had one. Zach, the current owners, how long has it been since their repair plan? Just for information.
At least six months, because that would have been the most we'd have allowed for the repair plan. And I know that there's also been, at various times, an open 657A case with this property. I think that was with the owner before this one. But it's been through a lot.
Thank you.
Would this be a property that we could rebuild on?
So when the property is condemned, the lot will still belong to the owner, and the cost will be assessed. If the owner were to pay those taxes, they could keep that lot and do whatever they wanted to with it. Typically, that doesn't happen, because the cost of condemnation usually exceeds the value of the lot, and we might come to own it somewhere down the line, in which case it might be suitable for development if we had it and we were able to move it to someone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any other business, Zach, for the Board of Health?
No.
Thank you. Do I entertain a motion to adjourn? Board of Health?
So moved. Second. Thank you, Mark and Matt.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going to resume the regularly scheduled council meeting. So nobody has left. We are the same council. So let's go ahead and do the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda: minutes from special meeting number 34 on November 30th, 2021, and regular meeting number 35 on December 7th, 2021, as presented. Acknowledgement of November financial reports and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Approve the appointment of David Basu to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 4/1/2026, and the reappointment of Mary Stewart and Robert Swanson to the Historic Preservation Commission, terms to expire 1/1/2025. Approve the appointment of Michael Meyer to the Airport Line Technician at the Atumwa Regional Airport on or about December 26, 2021. Beer and/or liquor applications for Red's Pub at 618 Church Street, Tequila Grill at 112 North Market Street. All applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
We'll move to item C and do the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there such a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the elimination of item F2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Point of clarification.
Okay.
So that included removing F2?
That was the motion.
So if I don't want F2 removed, then I would vote no on that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. No.
Councilmember Pope?
No.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
No.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
We have 3/2. Okay. So now we have... Moved to Phil's administrative report. So Phil, you have the floor.
No, it failed, so you'd still have to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
No.
Motion carries 4/1. Thank you. Okay, now item D. Phil, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The first item I had on here was a discussion of the ARPA or the American Recovery Plan Act dollars. For a quick clarification, the city is scheduled to receive about $3.6 million, 1.8 for each of the next two years, from that program. The funds are to be deposited and tracked, utilizing a different fund set aside specifically for these programs that the city elects to move forward with. We have in previously had, I think, the one public hearing the mayor and I had chaired, received a number of comments, ideas from the public on that. We have since received several others that came to either my attention, the mayor's, city staff, or other council, and provided a list. Staff had looked through that, and using a number of criteria, kind of helped prioritize those, and that was submitted to city council, current city council, for consideration and review. Any input or comments that you have, we have, at the moment, the end of March is when we have to have that determined on what we're going to plan to spend that money on, at least the first year of the money. There is talk that that may get moved, but at the moment, it would be at the end of March, we have to have decided. So the new council will be charged with making that final decision. But I thought it only fair to have you, as currently elected officials, definitely make any comments or thoughts that you have in regards to any of the projects that were identified, or if there's any others that hadn't been listed here that you wanted to bring up and include on the list.
Any comments from council? Ms. Myers?
Yes. Well, as an outgoing council person that really won't vote on it, but I think, according to what Mr. Rath said, to me, a couple of items that maybe could be considered and moved up would be, at the time of the list, maybe the depot, it wasn't understood that it was for sale at a lesser price than originally asked. So I would just recommend that you take a strong, hard look at the city purchasing the depot. And then the other one for me, with the hotel going in at Bridgeview, I understand that some of the funds could be used to improve parking at Bridgeview. So those would be two that I would ask you to take a good, hard look at.
Phil, for the public's knowledge, there is a due date on when the funds have to be expended by, correct?
Yeah. At the moment, my understanding is the end of, or June 30th, 2024, I think is what the date was.
That's why it's, you know, in terms of construction date, time is a quick one.
Yes.
So I think that's something to consider, is ensuring it's something that can get done, and that money can be expended for that item, and not something that may not be able to come to fruition by that time for weather or available contractors, et cetera, is something to consider. I also really look at the list and think that it's important to focus on things that can continue to move the city forward in terms of revenue production, things that we see that put investing in that will generate funds in the future, whether that's directly into the general fund or hotel motel tax, sales tax, et cetera. I think looking at ways that we can invest those dollars that move things forward. And I know we've talked about it before, but just again, for the public, it cannot be used for road construction or repair, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Just making, you know, I think it's important to reiterate that, that it has specific guidelines on what it can and can't be used for.
Yes. And so, and when staff was looking at prioritizing, a couple of things that you noted there, revenue generating, could it be completed in time, public works type projects like that were lower on the list. They were included because they were things that came up during the public meetings, and we didn't want to just exclude them, but received a lower priority as a result.
And my last comment, I promise, is looking at the list, I think there's several things that we can identify other funding sources to complete, to where we can ensure that we're maximizing our use of the ARPA funds. There's currently funds for food distribution centers and things, so I've been working to assist with that, to find funding for those, to ensure that if there's a specific source for those, we can use that, and then make sure we're leveraging all the dollars we can that are available right now.
Okay, very good. Other comments? Very complete list, Phil, and I think we'll have lots of fun watching you develop that and seeing what the council in the future wants to do.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to strategic plan update. So this was something that was, so it was about a year ago, was developed by the current council, and I think it's good to look back and kind of check off and see where we've had some successes over the past year and look ahead to the next year. And with all the new council members here tonight, I think it's something that we'll definitely evaluate and make sure that we can check off any of those wins, and also look ahead to make sure that they got same priorities there, as far as what we're looking at. So some of the things that were ongoing priorities that we continue to do is develop and provide more affordable housing, provide more incentives to developers for single-family housing, looking at different programs like Rural 360. That was something that we saw recently, not only with the Benita Avenue project and some success there with affordable housing and incentives, but also yesterday, RDG put out their findings on the housing study, and that'll be made available to the public at large. I believe Legacy had funded that updated housing survey, and there were two meetings yesterday, and I think they were really well-attended and had some great success, and people from across different industries in the city were there. So I think we really had a focus that housing is a critical need in Atumwa, and we had a lot of people looking to help continue with that. So I think we move forward on that. Constructing a hotel on the BBC site to draw business to the facility, that is another thing where we have made great progress, and that is, I think, something we will see in the next year here, and have that hotel in the very near future. Establishing positive attitude, communication, taking the wins. We've definitely tried to focus more on all the great things that we're doing, getting press releases and other things out there, helping to really focus on all the good things that are going on in Atumwa. Let's see. Chipping away at Derelict Houses, we had led just tonight, Board of Health, another house that was unfortunately had to be addressed, so Zach and staff continued to work tirelessly on that and helped to help clean up the city and the housing. Renegotiate BBC contract, he had more incentives to venue works. That was done earlier this year. So that, updating job descriptions is something that's currently going on as well. So those are all things that we're working on and continue to work on. Improving cooperation with community partners, working with economic development partners to develop incentive policies with GOPIP, Indian Hills, School District. We're continuing to do that on a regular basis, and I think our partnerships are stronger than ever, and we continue to look to new ways that we can really strengthen that. Establishing new revenue streams, we're just starting some looks and talks about franchise fees and some other things in that area, which, you know, that'll be for the new council, but an opportunity for the city to really capture and change how we do our whole financial structure. Growing our way out of current fiscal challenges, again, with the Benita Avenue project, we're adding 108 homes. That will go a long way, $8.2 million of new value. That will help very much in the long run. Creating policy incentives for infill development, increase tax base. I know Zach has presented a couple of things, some of them in the ARPA plan, things that also came out of the housing study. So we're definitely focused on all of those. And I think, oh, another one that we're working on is the bringing back the Human Rights Commission. Recently received communication from Monica Stone, who is, she is the head of the State Human Rights Commission. She came and spoke before the city council previously, and gave a little presentation on human rights commissions and what the benefits, pros and cons, might be. Following that meeting, she was working on a guide or manual to help cities like us get back to either create or reestablish human rights commissions. That guide was, the draft form was developed. I had a chance to review it in other communities, and they will plan to roll out the final version around the beginning of the year, and then we'll be able to take a look at that and see if it's something that the city would like to adopt and move forward with using that as a framework for bringing back the Human Rights Commission here in Atumwa. So that is also, I know, something that we've been working on over the last year, and a success. So, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rath?
Thank you, Phil. It's a very aggressive list.
Okay, item in our agenda. We always give citizens a chance to comment on items on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that's turned in a slip? Okay. There's also a spot at the end of the agenda, too. All right, item F.
Consideration of approving order form with Zen City Technologies U.S. Incorporated to increase civic engagement. Recommendation: approve the order form and contract with Zen City.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil?
All right. So Zen City reached out to me probably about a year ago, and it was one of those cold calls, a company that, you know, we get them all the time. And this is one talking about, originally it was the first wave of COVID relief money, and this program was eligible, and city could look at that. And I thought it was a good product, but it was still a little question on if it was something, if we were ready for it, if there was something that would be beneficial. And we had some back and forth, but in the end, it just didn't feel right to bring forward to council, and it's kind of set it on the shelf. Well, this last year, last summer at the League, they were there, and I had an opportunity to meet with them again, and I did. And they talked about, one of the things they do, they will collect all of the various information from, if it's the city's Facebook or other social media sites, you may have news media or other public sites that are out there. So let's say KYOU or KTVO had an article, or the Courier or Post had something out, and it was covering a topic. And now you have their Facebook pages and everybody commenting back and forth, positive, negative, sometimes neutral. It collects all of that information and puts it together into a framework where you can kind of see what percentage of the comments are trending positive, what are negative, what are just some topics, maybe it's not something we are talking about currently, but the community is, and what are things out there. Maybe there's misinformation about a particular project or a concept, budgeting, whatever it might be. And it helps to, Word Cloud or other things, give some ideas as to what is going on in the public that we may not be able to see. And if we're only looking at one or two Facebook sites, you may just get triggered. You know, if you're watching the news media, if you're conservative, you watch one. If you're liberal, you might watch another, and you're getting one side of the news. This is collecting that, all of that, from all of those sites, and pulling it together. The interesting thing was, they had done what they call as an insight, and that's a little deeper dive into a project or program. And they had sent me a draft, a sample one previously, and it didn't really mean a lot. Well, we had been talking about Human Rights Commission for, like I said, some time, and so back in the summer, I said, well, what if you did this? We were talking about this a lot at the beginning of the year. Go back to the beginning of the year, collect all the data that was being talked about in and around the city in regards to this topic, and create an insight for that. And so they did it from, I think it was January to September, October, when we met, and they pulled that together. And so you have, you know, a copy of what a particular one was right to Atumwa and what that looked like. So it was just to show you that if that was something that would be of value or not. Now, through the negotiations, I was able to get about a 65% reduction on the price, which is why it's in front of you tonight, rather than next year or going forward, because they're, at the end of the year, typical sales, they want to get, you know, whatever sales they can get in before the end of the year, they're offering a 65% discount locked in for the two years, and then after that, if we were to continue with them, there'd be no more than a 6% increase off of that reduced price. So I offer this to you for consideration. As I mentioned, some of the topics, you know, we were looking at trying to maintain our positivity, you know, turning things that may be seen as negative in the community into positive through better education, better information, also making sure that we're highlighting any of the positives, accentuating that. We, another item that was on here I didn't mention, was talking about trying to bring back the Public Information Officer. Well, I don't know that we have the budget for that, but this is definitely a tool in a technical side that could take the place of some aspects of what a PIO might do. And so I present it to you for consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Phil? And the cost is in your packet.
Yeah, it would be $8,500 for each of the first two years, and then up to a 6% increase after that.
Ms. Myers?
Yes. Well, I came in after reading all the material tonight, ready to vote no, but I had a chance to talk with Administrator Rath before the meeting, and a couple of things he said, one of which, and I think you just repeated it, Phil, it'll be a two-year, but at the end of two years, if it's not doing what you want to, the city can pull out of it. Because a couple of other things you mentioned, I don't know about conservative media, but I know there's some liberal media out there and stuff, but the council, they're going to be, you have to, like always with mediums that are out there, we have to control it, not let us control, not let it control us. So I hope that, I hope it works, but if it doesn't, then I understand that you have the ability to pull out.
Any other questions or comments?
So is this a way for us to get information out there, too, as well as receive the information?
Yes. You would be able to see the information that's out there and how you log into the site and you see, like, what you log into the site and you see like what types of things are trending. If things have been talked about and will be talked about after the first of the year, the breed-specific language or pit bull ordinance, you know, that it'd be a way to kind of take, gauge the community. Anybody that's talking about these things, are they for passing the legislation, a change in legislation? Do they want to hold with what we have in keeping breed-specific language in our ordinances? Aside from public hearings or other things, this captures some of that, the individuals that don't come to the meetings and what's being stated out there. Now, again, it's all up to you and how you want to interpret that data and what you want to, you know, how you want to filter that. But it gives you kind of a snapshot of what's going on in the city at any point in time. And if there is a particular topic that we wanted to delve more into, they will perform those or do those insights for us. And, you know, a specific topic or idea, concept, they can look at that over a period of time.
And making sure that everyone receives the information because, you know, some people are not that techno person that they can know how to get to the information. So how would we go about getting that information out to them?
So something like this, this would be an additional piece of information that could be presented to the council. If there's a discussion about any particular topic, you know, we'll be able to kind of take a look. And usually we have, something isn't decided in one night. You know, especially if there's like a public hearing required, we will set the public hearing at one meeting and then have a public hearing at a point in the future. But as soon as that mention is there about that public hearing, now it's out there in the public. And if the media picks up on that or we're posting it on our agendas, people start talking about it. And you'll start to see that. So when we get the public hearing, we can say, well, what was, you know, how does that looking right now? And we can provide that information, aside from you being able to look at that yourself as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of questions. One, who, obviously someone has to then obtain this data and look at it, analyze it, share it out with council. Is there a staff person that's going to be charged with doing that? Or who's going to be able to take the lead on utilizing this and then putting it out there?
It would be a coordination of Katie King and myself. So it's administrative function and I would, as the administrative assistant, have her work with me on that to be able to collect that information and grab. And actually, there's not anything we necessarily have to collect. It's done on the backside through their program, their software. It's just a matter of us logging into it and seeing what's going on. And if there's something that we pick up on, you know, a particular topic or message that's being talked about at large in the public, you know, we can see, hey, there's a lot of people talking about, well, for example, last Friday, there was a lot of people talking about the TikTok threats at the school. And that was all over. That was something that wasn't city business, but we would see that trending in here as information that was being popped up. And so it's not just what's going on for us, but anything going on maybe at the school district or the hospital or John Deere or JBS, whatever it might be, we'll see some of those topics trending as well.
Other question I had was, do they, would, do they just put out hard data of of numbers of kind of positive versus negative? Or is there some sort of algorithm that they used or use as, obviously there is always a skew negative on pretty much anything on social media? So is it just, is, do they use an algorithm for citizens against virtually everything versus, you know, quality comments?
Yeah, I didn't dig that deep into it with them, but they do do this across a number of communities. And so I think they do see that and realize that as well. So as far as the particular algorithms they're using, I don't know the inside of that. But that is something that they definitely look at and they do give the range. So they may skew something more neutral if it's not necessarily positive or negative.
And then one concern I have just overall, and not so much with just this contract in particular, but I know a lot of times there's information put out on the city Facebook page and there's questions in the comments that are never answered and things. I think just in general, if we're using, looking at this to find ways to better educate the community, we need to ensure that we are answering the questions that are coming to the city through that outlet. If we're going to spend this much money to look at ways that we can get the word out better on things, we need to ensure that answers or questions are being answered that are being put out, you know?
Agreed.
Good point, Holly.
Have we researched anybody else that's using this program?
Yes, so I've looked at a few other communities that are using it and they have been fairly pleased with what they're getting.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
No.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Consideration of market salary adjustment for city clerk based upon city comparables. Recommendation approve the market adjustment increase of $2,500 to the city clerk's salary effective January 1st, 2022.
Move the recommendation as presented. Thank you. Is there a second?
I think I will speak to this since I put it on the agenda. And I think it's, it's an issue for me that became, I became aware of as I looked at equity and fairness in the city structure. And I promptly, as much as anybody, have contact with the city clerk because I'm here every day and see what's going on. And I think our city clerk does an outstanding job and that position is a very important professional position. She provides a lot of technical stuff for us in terms of legal work, notices, civil service, meeting the public, keeps the council informed and keeps the council on their toes. And as I looked around the state and talked to other clerks and other city administrators, I found that our position was woefully underpaid and it was not considered a professional position. As such, the title clerk seems to be a connotation that it's required by Iowa code, but does not really describe all the things that the clerk does. So I did ask our, because I was going to put this on the agenda before, but I did talk to our administrator and our HR. And we did ask them to get some information, which they did obtain. We got the data for the five cities above us, five cities below us. And I took the highest salary and the lowest salary out of the mix and took the average of the remaining salaries and it still was woefully underpaid. So after thinking about it and realizing that we have made some adjustments in the past to get this up to be a professional position, I am recommending that we make a market adjustment. This is not an evaluation, this is a market adjustment of $2,500 to the clerk position. And I think if you, again, want to look at some of the other cities, you can see that there are some comparables, but every city does it just a little bit different. Some have other duties that they do along with the clerk title. But I think this would be a fair assessment. And in the memo I sent to you, I also recommended that we continue to push the administrative staff and get the pay plan reviewed for all positions. Because I think you're going to find our positions are under-valued. And I know we have talked about doing this for at least a couple of years and we have not gotten that done. So I'm hoping this coming year, the new council can look at the pay plan and get some comparisons and get an outside firm that specializes in pay plans to do this. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have and answer anything you want to ask.
Your honor, if I could, since I made the motion earlier on the agenda, I think that out of respect for the city clerk, I would like to, I'm glad that this went this way actually, because it gives me a chance to explain why I did what I did. First of all, I want to say that the motion that I made was in no way a reflection of the performance of the city clerk's performance over the last period. I think that she does a stellar job for the city. However, I have concern with this. I believe that we are working very prematurely on doing market adjustments. And I'll leave numbers out of this, but we have had several instances over the last 12 to 18 months where we've done quote unquote, market adjustments for individual employees of the city. And that comes at a, in my opinion, a fairness issue from a human resources perspective. It's not typical of any organization to just one-off market adjustments for employees. They usually do that as a part of a comprehensive study. And we have been talking about doing a comprehensive study as a city since we had Administrator Morris at least three to four years ago at this point. However, we have not done that and I almost feel ashamed that we're coming to the point where we're talking about that with the city clerk's position tonight. And she has to be the person that we're talking about this situation with. I believe that, looking at the comparables, yes, absolutely, she probably is falling outside of the realm of what would be considered the average pay scale. But I would argue, knowing some of the other salaries of some of the other department heads within the city, that several of the others are as well. My concern is that by doing this tonight, we are not being fair to any of the other city staff that are not in a position tonight to receive that same, that same consideration for a salary increase when they are as well at a point where they are not comparable with other cities. We have, looking at the increase here, this is even greater than what we just signed several union contracts with, for their annual increases. So I think that this should be a priority item, a very high priority item for city staff to be doing a comprehensive study for all city staff, especially those that are salary exempt. But I think that, you know, if we do make that a priority, we do this increase tonight, then we're looking at turning around and doing another increase in a few months, which is actually after the fact that the city clerk will have received her evaluation and received probably, because again, she does an excellent job, probably after she receives an increase for her performance. So that would make a lot of pay increases in a very short amount of time. And I just, I can't support this because of that.
Thank you for your comments.
I would just echo that. It's looking at this from a market adjustment standpoint, not a performance standpoint in my mind. And knowing that hopefully, is there a goal on when the adjustment increase or the market analysis will be done for the staff? Knowing that we're working towards that right now, I just feel that it's more equitable and just to do this all at once as opposed to doing one-off.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, again, I was coming tonight, having read the material, ready to vote no on it because of all the things Mark said that I agree with. But one of the things, Mark, over the years with Andy Morris and so forth, at the time, you know, we were dealing with HR attorney position combination. And we try to do things and we always have all kinds of delays. But in talking with Mr. Rath and his saying that this is going to be, this pay plan will be an immediate priority if council so wishes, which I think they would. But I think now my switch is having an HR position that is totally dedicated to these type of issues, that now it should probably move. So that's, that's my thought.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll, please.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
No.
Councilmember Berg?
No.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Motion fails.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the matter of the adoption of the amended and restated Otumwa Urban Revitalization Plan for the Otumwa Revitalization Area.
Need me, Zach? You have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I did mention this a little bit last week and I got, I just want to, you know, restate some of that. And then I also have a couple of things I have to correct that I did get just a little bit wrong. And thankfully, we have really good attorneys and they set me straight. So the state legislature did recently reclassify some of their tax categories. They got rid of the multifamily category and they equalized the back, or the rollback for all residential property. And so when they did that, we did have to face an issue with our urban revitalization plan, which was that it had a special exemption for multifamily. And we had to at least change that to make a correction. And when we did that, we looked with our attorneys and they thought that it'd be good to not just make a small adjustment there, but to amend and restate the plan. And the reason they wanted to restate the plan was to make it very clear that we've had in this urban revitalization plan from the beginning, a blight designation that covers the entire community. And that that blight designation would afford us the ability to offer residential property tax abatement for single-family homes for improvements larger than 10%, up to any amount. The code would cap that for other communities at $75,000. At the last meeting, I said $150,000. It's actually $75,000. That would be the cap for other communities, but with our blight designation, we would be offering single-family homes an abatement of 100% for three years on any improvement over the value, or over 10% of value. We also wanted to look at the schedules that were in the plan and make sure they matched our planning priorities. And so one thing that we did identify out of the comprehensive plan in the housing study is that we have four residential historic districts in Otumwa. And that each of those districts needs some help in maintaining the historical character, maintaining value in that neighborhood. And so we did look at that and we created a special exemption for historic property for five years, 100% with certain qualifications. The first is that that rehabilitation would have to be a historically sensitive rehabilitation approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, following standards would be based on the Department of Interior standards. And also that that renovation couldn't increase the density of the units in the building. So you wouldn't be able to rehabilitate a historic home into multiple apartments and receive a five-year abatement. And so that abatement will, was considered by the Historic Preservation Commission and was recommended by the commission. We also did look at the sliding scale for resident, multifamily residential, or as the plan will call it, in this case, residential with three or more units. And we did tweak that scale a little bit. We increased to a little bit more than we had offered before, but we did not increase to the maximum allowed by law. The maximum allowed by law would be 10 years, 100%. We did 100% for the first two years, 80 for the second two years, 60 for the third two years, 40 for the fourth two years, and then for the last two years, 20%. And the reason we did this was to still allow for flexibility in identifying the large projects that we do want to maybe provide TIF or other incentives for, but we want to make sure that we have the flexibility to pick and choose the projects that are best suited. But the reason that we did increase the schedule a bit was to match a priority in the housing study, which is to incentivize medium-density infill development. We want to make sure that we are upping the exemption a little bit to allow for that. We also kept the exemption schedule the same for industrial and commercial property. At the last meeting, I said that was the maximum allowed by law. It's actually not. We could have gone a little bit more, but we haven't seen any indication in our reviewer and our planning priorities that would suggest that there's a reason to increase that right now. And so the other change that we made was we did remove the five-year sliding scale for residential multifamily, for residential, single-family. That schedule was almost never used and really did make the process somewhat more complicated. We wanted to streamline the application, make it easier and just reflect what people use. The last thing I'll say is, again, that this is a program that's available to everyone in the community. I want everybody in the community to know that it's there. We've had historically, you know, fewer than 20 applications every year for this program. And there's more than 20 households that are doing more than 10% of value of improvements every year. And they're not participating either because they don't know or because of something else. But we want to make sure that they do at least know and we give this opportunity to folks to make sure that they do, you know, receive the same benefit. There's been a lot of talk about, are we giving tax rebates just to certain people? Just from people outside the community, just for certain projects? No, we do have something available to everyone. And I want to make sure that we make sure that that's in front of everybody and they have the chance to take advantage of it. We're going to be looking at doing some more things, putting We're going to be looking at doing some more things, putting applications with our building inspectors so that when they go out on final inspections, they can give folks an application for the program, just to make sure that again, it's put in front of them. But in general, I think that this revised, restated plan really will make it simpler, will reflect our priorities and will help us grow the program.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this issue, now's the time to step forward. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe? Yes.
Resolution number 218, 2021, adopting the proposed amended and restated Atumwa Urban Revitalization Plan for the Atumwa Revitalization Area. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 218, 2021.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Any questions for Zach? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe? Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Community Development Block Grant from the COVID-19 Program for the Atumwa North Market Street Facade Improvement Project.
You're up again, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And Brad Grief is going to talk some about this as well. One thing I want to flag really early is that this public hearing and the resolution attached to the public hearing and the resolution H7 are attached. They would need to both pass for us to submit the res, or the application for this. I do just want to mention that early on. This is a Iowa Economic Development Authority program that's a result of some funding from the CARES Act to expand the community development block grant programs and in this case, offer grants that are more of a first come, first served rather than a rolling application cycle. And we're looking at the two buildings, each with two facades at 105 and 107 North Market and 114, 118 North Market. For folks that might not have all the addresses on Main Street District memorized, that'd be the Pallister Brothers Building and then that would be the, the Market Street side of the building that sort of has the big cheese grater metal cladding on the second level. And so this would be facade improvements for that $50,000 per facade would be the grant award and we'd be looking at either an allocation from the ARPA money or from future CIP to the existing facade program to provide our match, although that would be also in, making a change to our facade program, we'll want to discuss in the future as well. But this would be a resolution, large resolution that would authorize us to make the application and I'll let Brad speak to that.
Should you open the public hearing yet?
We're still in the public hearing phase.
Presentation there. So I guess as he said, this is a, an allocation that the state of Iowa was given through the federal CARES Act funding via HUD. So this act's pretty much like the rest of the CDBG programs that we've been really successful with, except this program's kind of targeted for rapid implementation. So that's a little bit why we're focusing on a much smaller target area than we're, than we're used to, just because we have to get the thing done and there's not a lot of contractors out there and there's a lot of this money coming out in addition to all your ARPA funds that are getting spent too. So everything we're doing here is really strategic of trying to get this something that's, something we can get done again, like Holly said earlier, by July of 2023 is when everything has to be done in this, this grant program. So when we get down there a little, a little later, when you ask, well, why are we only doing, you know, two property owners? That's the reason we have to get this done and we needed something that was ready to go ASAP. So again, this is just the same as the regular downtown revitalization program that we've had to, to programs so far with, just on a smaller scale. Eligible properties can receive up to 50,000 per facade and as you'll see in this later on, we've got three buildings that are going to be participating in five total facades for 250,000 bucks. So again, to get those slum and blight conditions, we have to identify a blighted area. Again, that's resolution 223-2021. In your meeting tonight, we need to have 25% of the target area be fair or poor. And again, ugly doesn't necessarily mean blighted. Sorry, Edward Jones, but to determine the, did it go? There we go. Okay. So to determine the fair, poor, good, or excellent, we use some criteria that HUD provides us or that IEDA provided us from HUD. And here's the map that we came, that I came up with. Again, kind of a micro target area, just so we can have a more rapid action project. We get to call the 107 side a facade that's eligible in this program because it is blighted and it's a highly visible facade. Obviously you can see it when you step out of City Hall and look straight over there. So we've got five buildings in this pro, or in the, in the target area. Four of them are blighted, therefore we've met the 25% criteria. So here's your two buildings that were technically three buildings that we're going to work on. You can see there's two storefronts on each one, the primary facades, and then there's the side facade there on 107. So how did we come to these, these projects? Well, Wes Olson approached, I think it was Zach at the city, and Zach told him to contact me about it since I've been doing most of the facade and CDBG work downtown. So I said, okay, we've got a project that I think can go ahead, but I also knew that within the last year and a half or so, the Gates family had design assistance done from Main Street Iowa on their buildings right across the street. So I said, hey, let's get them and see if they want to do, you know, a little micro facade project on North Market Street. They were interested, so we, we got Curtis Architecture on board to do some actual designs, not just some mockups in, in Photoshop. And he came up with cost estimates. Well, the costs for 129, 131 were a little higher than they could afford right now, so we're moving forward with 105, 107, and then the 114, 116, 118 North Market. You can't really see it behind the cheese grater, as he calls it, as I call it too. But if you look up there, it's hard to see, I guess with this, but you've got stuff falling down behind those, behind the cheese grater onto the, the grates that are there. A lot of the grates aren't there, as you can see in that lower corner picture. So a lot of that stuff that's chipping and falling away is just falling into the ground and onto the sidewalk. So that's how we're able to call this blighted, not just because it looks bad from across the street, but because it's actually physically deteriorated underneath. The reason, you'll see later on in the, in the designs, the reason we're not including window rehabilitation in the 105, 107 is because they've actually drywalled in and wallpapered over the windows on the interior upstairs. So they have dreams and desires and again, they have preliminary designs done for apartments in these and we're going to wait until they move forward with doing the apartment rehabilitation to add window work to, to the, this property itself. So here you go, you can kind of look and see what they're going to look like there. Not a whole lot's going to be done on that lower portion because we can't necessarily call that blighted. It's, I mean, again, it's ugly, but it's not in bad conditions. So we have to leave that alone, but you take that cheese grater off and there's all sorts of stuff that needs to be done on the upstairs, tuck pointing. And then the transom areas on both sides are deteriorating and need to be either encapsulated or removed and we're proposing encapsulation there. Take everything off the side and it's actually just a full side brick building. There's two windows that are actually there on the, on the bottom that you can't see. We're going to put those windows back, put new door on the side and then again, leave the windows on the upstairs alone, but tuck point the whole side. And we go over to 114, 116, 118 North Market. Again, from across the street, it looks okay, but you start looking up close and there's all sorts of cracks in the mortar behind that paint. It's not just chipping paint, but the mortar's deteriorating up there. You look behind the chipping paint on the woodwork, the, the trim there on the first level, you can see that that's deteriorating and rotting. The foundation's cracking and chipping. So what we're going to do on that one is, is take care of the whole thing, get rid of that nasty facade that, or two storefronts that are there, put full glass facades up there. We're going to leave the windows alone again in this one because they're in decent enough shape, but we're going to go to full tuck point, new foundation work there. And here is your budget. So estimated construction cost about $375,000 based on what we've seen from Oskaloosa and Sigrnia projects going on right now. So we adjusted our prices based on what we're seeing from there. There's some little bit of mortar and asbestos testing that we'll do. There's some easement recording that we have to do, public notices for hearings and such. There's final design architectural and construction oversight and then just a little bit of CDBG admin for the labor standards and things like that. So our total project is 446,000. The owners are going to put in a little over 22% there for 101,000. The city is going to hopefully put, put in 95,000, which is less than the owners in this case. And the CDBG is actually going to be a higher percentage than we're used to seeing on these facade projects of 250,000. We're used to seeing somewhere around 40% for the CDBG input. Again, this is rapid, rapid timeline. I'm saying that I'm going to submit it by 114, but I'd rather submit it by the end of next week. I just want to give myself a little bit of leeway in case I don't get the, the bank letters and such back as fast as I want them. And then they're going to award within 40, 45 days of when I submit the application. So we're looking to bid this in the spring, complete construction, hopefully by the end of the year, but I'm saying conservatively by spring 2023. Fred's going to be hanging out, making sure this is kosher and that we're not bothering people, displacing people. And everybody always has access from the community standpoint. Here's a real quick thing as a point of procedure. We have to update our Community Development Housing Needs Assessment. There's, there's up here if you folks want to look at it and I've got it up there with the council. Basically you guys did one of these, well, you've been doing these for 10 years. We've just been updating them every time that we do a grant application. It's been a few years since we've had a CBG application and in that time, we've actually completed the comprehensive plan. We've completed that housing study with a lot of public input. So basically what I did is I took what you've already said and snipped out what was in your comp plan and updated it. And so if you had any comments or questions on that, additions, subtractions, if you like it, just let me know.
Any questions for Brad or Zach?
I just have one really quick question. $95,000 is the cost for the city on this project. What do you estimate the increased valuation of property taxes in that area to be?
I don't know for that certain building, but I know of all the stuff we've done in Main Street since 2017, the valuations just in the Main Street District alone have gone up $4 million, which I would venture to guess is more than probably the combined value of the rest of the town. Kayla? So the return on these investments, again, this, the, the funding is coming from a dedicated, already attributed stream. It's not coming from somewhere else.
Sure. And, and my point to that is, is just so the, the community's comfortable with the fact that this is a very sound investment for the community to invest these dollars downtown because we are seeing the return on, on our investment dollars.
And I guess like a toot our own horn, this last week, I was approached by Main Street Iowa, who was approached, approached by Main Street America for successful case studies of implementing CDBG programs in their downtown and we're going to be a national case study of successful downtown revitalization using CDBG funds. So.
I was going to say.
Good things are happening here.
Looking at.
Despite what social media might say.
Looking at the evaluations, it looks like on other DTR projects from 2015 till now, we've seen about a four year payback on, on what it had been. So not only is it paying back those funds that the city's investing in four years, but then they're generating even more after that.
Which is awesome.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think I sent, I sent Kayla a spreadsheet I made with lots of green positives on it. But yeah, so it was about four years' return on those.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on this? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 224, 2021, authorizing the mayor to sign and submit the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Community Development Block Grant application for the Atumwa North Market Street Facade Improvement Project and if funded to sign all contract related documents. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 224, 2021.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
abstain.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe? Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Zach.
Resolution number 22021, authorizing the mayor to execute a pipeline license, license agreements identified as Burlington Northern Santa Fe Agreement Number 21W 10277, which is the sewer lines, and Burlington Northern Santa Fe Agreement Number 21W 11375, which is for the water line between Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Company and the City of Atumwa for the Green Street Storm Sewer Improvements Project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 22021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Give that to Mark. Good evening, Larry. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As a little bit background, during the Main Street projects, Vine Street to Green Street portion, a separate storm system was installed and then reconnected at the Main Street and Green Street intersection. The project that these permits go with will separate that with the future project. We had to have two storm sewer pipelines that are 36 inch in diameter inside of 48 inch casing and one portable water pipeline that's 20 inch in a 30 inch casing and they'll both be installed on the Green Street crossing at Burlington Northern. Burlington Northern Santa Fe's permitting process requires pipeline license agreements and processing fee for each pipeline. For us, it's $1,500. An agreement requires the city to provide railroad protective liability insurance or to participate in Burlington Northern Santa Fe's railroad insurance program at a cost of $1,266 per agreement. Staff recommends Burlington Northern's insurance. The first project we did, they didn't offer that insurance on McLean Street. It was almost a $16,000 bill if the contractor was to get insurance outside of this program. Atumwa Water Works will reimburse the City of Atumwa for the fees incurred for the water pipeline. The licenses shall continue for a period of 50 years. This is something we worked with them. Typically, they issue a 25 year permit at 750 and we went through their legal department multiple times and they basically doubled their fee and went to 50 years instead of doing like an annual renewing fee that's hard to track. And one of the things I will point out that the Iowa Code 388.4 provides that the title of all property of a city utility must be held in the name of the city. That's why we're doing the permit for Atumwa Water and Hydro.
Any questions for Larry? Pretty comprehensive document.
Oh, it's been a process.
Hearing no questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 209, 2021, assessing 2021 weed mowing charges against certain lots in the City of Atumwa, Iowa for a total including administrative fees of $37,590. Recommendation pass and adopt. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 209, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Holly.
Second.
Mark?
Second.
Thank you. Zach, you get to present that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a, a note that Chris had given me before and I hadn't made. This is a attached report for 120 properties that were mowed by the city's mowing contractor in 2021. These are property owners that were sent a notice to mow grass and weeds over 10 inches, but they didn't mow, and so we had to mow for them. The owners of those properties were billed for those mowing charges, and the list is the properties that did not pay the invoice when it was sent out, and so this would assess their taxes. The total charges that was originally included was 37,590. We received a $350 check, and we're going to be removing one of the properties from this list of assessments, $375 check. So that would be 375,000, or $375 less than what was originally on the resolution.
Any questions for Zach? Is this results from the, about two years ago, we did the citywide mowing and decided we weren't going to do some mowing, and is this just for the weeds, the tall grass?
So this is, so this does include some properties that are on our mowing list. Because they are vacant or abandoned, it includes some vacant lots that we own, but it also includes, in this case, because of it being an assessment, it would only include mowing that was done for private property owners who received a notice. They didn't mow their yard, and then they also didn't pay their bill when it was sent.
Any other questions for Zach? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 219, 2021, authorizing participation in the National Opioid Settlement. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 219, 2021.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you.
All right, so I think it's be brief. Earlier this year, Mayor Lozner and I were contacted about participating with the state regarding a national settlement with the three largest pharmaceutical distributors. By passing the resolution in front of you and signing the attached MOU, the city agrees to its share of any settlement agreement the state of Iowa is able to achieve. The alternative would be is if we were to try to stand alone and file a case against these same companies. Standalone case would be at our own expense, and the city does not, and it would not be guaranteed that we would receive anything, any additional compensation than we would through the, the combined matter. Recommendation is to participate with the state on the matter and let them fight the fight for us.
And for council's information, there is a January 2 deadline, so we have to do that. Any questions for Phil? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 220, 2021, approving a workplace violence and threats prevention policy. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 220, 2021.
Is there a recommendation as presented?
Second.
Thank you. We have with us Human Resource Director Barb Kojo. Barb, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. At the, at the request of council, we've worked to develop a new policy titled the Workplace Violence and Threats Prevention. The policy that is in front of you actually expands upon our current policy, which is Article 28 in our Personnel Procedure Manual. We've consulted with insurance companies. We've done an employee survey, asking our, all of our employees some questions on that. And we've also consulted with our attorneys, and the policy that you have is the result of all of that.
Any questions for Barb? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
No.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 221, 2021, approving the updated personnel policies for the City of Atumwa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 221, 2021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Barb.
Thank you, sir. There's three updates that we would like to make to the personnel policy. The first one is to, the first two actually pertain to our longevity policy. As we've been going through and, and working through our new system and with our new, with our policies, we have found that there were some things, some inconsistent things, and our current policy does not accurately reflect the proper way to pay longevity to our employees. And so what we are going to do is we are looking to update that in our personnel policy. The chart that you have is what we've actually been operating off of. It just was not stated correctly in that, in the personnel policy itself. The second change with longevity is looking at our full-time and our part-time employees. Currently, in our personnel policy, it doesn't state anything that our part-time employees actually get a longevity. However, in our collective bargaining agreements, it does talk that our part-time employees get it, but more at a reduced rate. So as we're working through, again, through things, we have about seven part-time positions within the city, and they are currently occupied by employees that have been here in excess of 15, 20 years. And so what we're looking to do is pay our part-time employees at that same schedule as our full-time employees, make it all consistent across everyone, whether you're full-time or part-time. The part-time employees, because they don't work quite as many hours, they're not going to get quite as much as the longevity in that amount. So that's the second change to that. And then the third change is with approving the violence in the workplace policy, what we're going to do is reword Article 28, and you've got the wording there as to what we're going to do, which is essentially a snapshot of the policy, the actual policy itself, and it's going to be in our personnel policy now.
Any questions for Barb? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Barb.
Resolution number 222, 2021, approving supplemental agreement number three between the City of Atumwa and Garden and Associates LTD for additional professional engineering services for construction surveying for the Woodland Avenue Reconstruction Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 222, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Larry. You have the floor.
The City of Atumwa entered into professional service agreement with Garden and Associates November 5, 2019, for the design and bid phase services, including a preliminary site survey, design purposes for Woodland Ave Reconstruction Project. Supplemental agreement number three consists of additional professional service for construction staking for cross-country sanitary storm and pavement layout. The estimated cost of agreement is $61,042.92 based on the standard hourly rate. This will increase the contract by $5,042.92, and we have the rest of the numbers there. We did provide a little drone flight. I think that we were very fortunate to have the last few weeks of, of warmer weather. We was able to get the entire section in, and we chose to kind of, we made a decision early on to take out the last phase and do it all in one stretch. We was a little bit concerned about getting caught in a winter shutdown, but with, with the weather projection that we had, we took that risk and was able to get it in. All the driveways are in. There's a few that need to reach cure. It generally is open to local residents only. As soon as everything's cured, we'll open it clear up. But again, we were fortunate with these last few weeks. I was able to also get Main Street opened back up, all the drives in, backfilled. And of course, this year, we fought like many, many cities. We had a lot of problems with crew sizes, number of crews, and, and the contractors did just keep them staffed like everybody else in the country. That turned out very well. If you haven't drove it, I'd, I'd suggest that you drive both of those projects. They've turned out quite well.
Any questions for Larry? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 223, 2021, a resolution of necessity to establish the boundaries of the Atumwa North Market Street Facade Improvements Project area by identifying the district bound by lots 10 and 11 of the HP Graves subdivision and Lot 196 of Original Platt Block 15 as a blighted area in the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 223, 2021.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented. Thank you. Good evening again, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is the resolution that I had mentioned was attached to the one that was in the earlier public hearing for the CDBG facade grant application. This is the resolution that will adopt the slum and blight inventory planning work that Brad did, and then he showed in the map there that identifies at least 25% of this area as in either poor or fair condition, and does qualify it then for the grant program.
Any questions for Zach? Good reporter, I think it pulls together. Hearing no questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3188, 2021, an ordinance affirming the City of Atumwa's precinct boundaries after the 2020 census. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3188, 2021.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead and read it, or did you want to read it?
Me?
I can read it if you want.
Yeah, go ahead. You did all the work on this, so I'll let you take the credit.
Reprecincting takes place after every federal census. Any proposed changes must be reviewed and approved in order to submit to the county auditor and to the Secretary of State. The Code of Iowa sets the maximum population of a precinct of 3,500, with each precinct being contained wholly within an existing legislative district. A city containing more than one precinct shall be divided into each, into election precincts that best serve the convenience of the voters while promoting electoral efficiency. Each city with a population over 3,500 must file the following information with the Secretary of State, even if the city does not make any changes to its precinct ward boundaries. Precinct maps and GIS-shaped file or block equivalency files, city reprecincting worksheets, certification of the population of each precinct, ordinance describing precinct boundaries, and any agreements with counties must also be submitted. Precinct population has been calculating, calculated using data from the 2020 census and shows an increase of 506 citizens from the 2010 census, established figure of 25,023. Iowa law requires precinct boundaries to be certified to the State Commissioner of Elections within 60 days after the redistricting of congressional and legislative districts becomes law. The City of Atumwa's precinct boundaries are not changing. However, a new ordinance must be adopted to reflect the 2020 census results.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? I think it's pretty straightforward. Ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Waive the second and third consideration, pass and adopt ordinance 3188, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Resolution number 225, 2021, authorize the city clerk to certify the election precinct boundary ordinance, precinct population totals, and precinct maps to the Secretary of State.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Jay. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on any business for the city? Seeing none, I'll pass on that. I, I would like to just share a few thoughts with our current council and incoming council. This is a bittersweet evening for those of us sitting up here who will not be returning. It's been a really honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Atumwa, and I think most of us would agree, it's been a great opportunity, although there are some challenges from time to time. This particular council has been a great council to work with. They've always done their homework, and I think seriously have tried to do what's in the best interest of the city. With the new council coming in and with a major change, I want to encourage both Phil and the new council to do what we commonly refer to as a council college or work sessions, more than just a single meeting. And I know several of you went to MLA, which is the Municipal Leadership Academy, this past weekend, to learn as much as you can about the duties and responsibilities. And as new council members, you know that you have no individual power. The only time you have power is when you vote, and you have three or more and a positive response that you want to accomplish something. Regardless of how the vote comes out, it's your duty to support the majority position. Remember, is it good for the city? And will it improve the lives of the majority of the citizens? Your job is to vote on each issue and to register a conflict only if you will personally benefit or if you have a financial involvement. I know that MLA was a great experience for several of you from what you've reported. I would encourage you to continue to take advantage of the league training that they, they offer. Your job as a new council is to set policy, but before you do that, you need to learn the structure of the city. The city administrator is the most important position in the city. All positions are important, but you, as council, should take your concerns and ideas to him first. While you may want more information, and the, the city administrator may need to involve other people, he needs to know what you're talking about so he can work with his staff. As a council, you set the policy and the programs for the entire city. Department heads are here to give you the information and get the background to help you make an informed decision that's good for the city. They are not here to tell you whether or not to have the program. That's your job, but they can give you the information to help you arrive at that. And I think we've had a lot of discussion about finances and general fund. It's your job to find a way to say, is this a valuable program for the community? It's the finance department then to say how to finance it or how to pay for it. You're coming on board. The budget's already in the process of being started for this coming fiscal year, and so there is a disadvantage, but I, I think you'll find if you take a hard look at the information you have, it'll be a, a good learning experience and you'll have fun doing it. Fund accounting is different than your family checkbook. You can't co-mingle some of the things that you might do at home, so our staff will certainly keep you straight on that. And, and I think the other thing that's also frustrating, or at least it was for me, was the number of state requirements and prescriptions that are given by the Office of Management and Budget and tell you what you can and can't spend our money on. Have the staff show you as a new council how our taxes are actually figured, and I know that we're working hard on lowering our tax rate and trying to increase our total valuation. That's the only way we're going to be able to get our heads above water. Before you approve any new bonding issues, we often refer to that as a CIP, ask to see the list of the past bonding and explanations of what the bonding will be used for and how it will be paid for. Bonding and TIF are two of the tools you have to help supplement city operations, and each is different and has their own set of requirements. Have the finance department give you a quarterly update on the annual financial report, which has to be filed with the state on December 1 of each year. I recommend to the council and to the city administrator that you might want to consider having an outside finance committee, people who are not working for the city, but who have a financial background and understanding of, of financial needs. And lastly, listen carefully to all sides of the issues before you make a decision. Formulate your position that you can share with the public. They care about how you vote and what you stand for. Remember, it takes teamwork, and you have to work as a team to get stuff done. Trust our staff, but verify. Ask lots of questions, and is there a better way to do business here in the city? What's the return on an investment for each project? We had that demonstrated tonight. Think long-term in your decision-making for the future of the city and for future councils. in your decision-making for the future of the city and for future councils. And lastly, remember to have some fun. It's a lot of work, but there's also some time to have some fun. I think tonight, I'd also like to make a comment. Today, I had the opportunity to be down at the water pollution control facility. We had a 28-year employee retire and sat around the table and listened to him and some of his coworkers, and I think, you know, it's something we as a council need to do. We need to know more about all the things that go on in our city, and we have some outstanding staff. You know, Katie King, as most of you know, administrative assistant, does a great job. Chris right here does a great job, but some people you may not see as much or may not have as much contact with, like Janice Bain, who does our recycling. Kelly Blankenship, who's an administrative assistant down at Public Works. Kathy Shepard and Keely Johnson in the inspections and planning and zoning area. I think, you know, somebody that doesn't get much attention here at the council, but Kevin Sylvester, our head of our sewer department, has done some great work for our citizens and has solved some real touchy problems, but very seldom gets recognized. Chad Carlson, Superintendent of Public Works, is one of those guys, you ask him to get something done, it's done, and it's done very well. Karen Abumstead, who's new secretary down at our police department, has been a great addition to this staff. Our new chief, Chad Farrington. Lauren McIntyre, who works for Jean in the Parks Department and at the beach. All of our inspectors, I see Jay back here, who is working for us, Jake Rush and Jeremy Lipp and Jeff Hamm. They do a great job and have to do some very difficult jobs out in the community and oftentimes don't get recognized. A person that puts up with a lot, and I think I've come to really appreciate, is Alicia Banksen. And Alicia is one of those quiet administrative assistants that just does her work every day and helps our staff get their job done. This year, I spent some time with Michael Smith. He's one of our engineering assistants, and walked a project with him and saw him get down in the dirt with the contractor and figure out how to solve a problem, because we had a delay over on Marion Street that was not anybody's fault, but it certainly made it difficult to get the job done. Scott McCarty's another person. Mary Cook in our payroll and finance department. Tina Jaggers really does a great job. Kristen Mitchell. Dan Crossman, our chief mechanic. Brian Lewis. Phil Bergmeyer. Rachel Jones. I could go on and on. Tony Miller and some of the people who are here in the audience, but we have an outstanding group of staff who do a good job every day and don't get recognized for some of the things they do that make your job as a new council easier. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to work with you. The one last thing I do want to say is we are going to recess and go into a closed session to do an evaluation, so we will do that in just a moment. I also want to thank Kayla for clarifying. I had a, I've had three citizens question about a report that we handed out here in a meeting and wanted to get some information so that I could go back and say, hey, this is accurate, and it explains why we ended up with some actual figures, some estimated figures, and some audited figures. But in the end, the information is accurate, so I just want to be sure that the public always knows that you can ask a question and we'll get you the information. We don't always have it at our fingertips. With that, I'll turn to the council. Is there any last comments from council?
I'd like to make a couple. So since this is the last time that we'll get to sit together as a group, I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with everybody up here. I think that just to kind of go through my list here really quick, it's been really refreshing with Councilperson Berg, getting to know her and having the opportunity to work with her. She's quite honestly one of the hardest-working people and more intelligent people that I've ever met in my life, so it's been, it's been a true honor to get to know you and to work with you. And same goes with Councilperson Dalby. You know, he kind of took me under his wing when I decided that I was going to run for city council the first time, so I greatly appreciate that, and it's been fun. And Councilperson Myers, who was one of the people when I decided to run, who actually helped me out and gave me a lot of advice. I appreciate that greatly, and I'll always remember that, and I'm really going to miss being able to banter back and forth with you and make fun of your coat and tell you that you're wrong all the time. That's going to be something I'm going to miss, so I'm going to have to pick somebody else to tell them they're wrong all the time. So hopefully, one of the new council people has a really ugly coat that I can make fun of. And lastly, Mayor Lozio, I can't, I think that you've been an excellent representative for the city of Atumwa. You have done so much more than what is expected for the mayor's position in this community, so I just can't tell you. I hope that I can speak for a lot of the citizens in Atumwa. You know, thank you for your service, because you have, you have done so much for the community. You've been an excellent spokesperson for the city, and I think while I know that Mayor Johnson, I guess I'll call him mayor now, will do an excellent job for the city. I just want you to know that, I think that you have done remarkably well for the city, and as a citizen of the community, I very much appreciate that.
You should have wore the jacket, though. I'm just saying. Tonight could have been the night for you to wear the jacket, because that was a pretty cool jacket. You should have just, you know what I'm talking about. It looked like a couch cover. You should have wore that jacket tonight.
It is unique.
But I just want to say, I appreciate each and every one of you guys. You have welcomed me in to the phone, and it's been nothing but great things. So I just want you guys to know that you're passing the baton to some great people, so we will continue doing great things here in this community. So thank you for your service.
So it is 7:06, so we're going to call this meeting into recess, and we'll reconvene downstairs in 1:08 for a meeting with our city administrator. Thank you and good night, and you're welcome to stick around. We'll come back into open session if we need to take any action.